Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners in Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, July 1st, 2025, at 4:30 PM. We're going to begin tonight with an invocation. And I had asked a couple pastors, and they're all on vacation. So I'm going to go ahead and give the invocation tonight. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; that will be done on earth as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you. Do I pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Before we begin tonight, before I turn it over to our city manager, I'd like to make a special recognition tonight. We have up here on our third row, and I'll have them stand as I call out their names. We have the commander of VF, Veterans of Foreign War Post 1298, our Commander Donald Basham, Donnie, our Senior Vice Commander Glenn Skaggs, our Junior Vice Commander Mark Hamilton, our Quartermaster Robert Better, our Trustee Malcolm Cherry, and our Trustee Jim Manley. And then we also have honored guests with us tonight. We have Senator Mike Wilson. Hello, sir. And I would like to make a special announcement of our appreciation. This is the Veterans of Foreign War Post 1298, in recognition of their outstanding achievement as an all-state post from July 2024 to June 2025. They have an exceptional membership drive that they have been able to achieve of over 102%. They have also raised over $14,000 in charitable donations and donated over 750 hours of volunteer service. These are just a few of their items, but they have accomplished on behalf of our community. But, gentlemen, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for combining what this post means, the VFW post, all-state post. And this is a special recognition that was given to by the state, and we have a recognition that we would like to give on behalf of the city to you tonight. So, gentlemen, would you come up here? Commissioners will stand as well. Senator, would you like to join us? Donnie, I'm going to give this to you. Ladies and gentlemen, all-state post. Post 1298. All right, Mr. Mizel, do you have comments at this time?
I do. Mayor, I have two awards I'd like to acknowledge. The first one is, is we have with us Jessica Ferris. Jessica, will you stand up? Jessica is Animal Control Officer for us and has successfully completed the requirements for the Senior Animal Control Officer level of the Siteation Officer Career Path Advancement Program. And she has obtained this by completing all requirements for the last six years that she's had with us, experience of animal control officer. She's certified in administration of chemical immobilization, assists other staff in training when required, and actively maintains a license and CEU requirement. So Jessica was instrumental in the recent case we had over on Lucinda with the abuse case of those animals, and she was uncovered that and recognized what was going on. It was key in solving that and in us addressing that issue with that situation on Lucinda. So congratulations to Jessica Ferris for her accomplishments on that. Secondly, just received notice that our Finance Department has received another Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year into June 30th, 2024. This report has been adjudged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program for the certification, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. So congratulations to Department of Finance. And how many years is this? Can somebody help me? 19 consecutive years. We keep the streak alive. So Finance Department, if you work for Finance Department and you're here tonight, please stand up and be noticed. This is only maybe a third or fourth of Finance, so the great team over there. Katie, do you have anything else to say? Aaron Ballou is our Assistant CFO. Sean Weeks, Assistant CFO. Everybody plays a part in putting that big joker together, and it's Y-ethic. So from start to finish, it all starts with entry of the dollar that comes in or the dollar that gets spent and goes out. So it's all recorded, and it all builds, and it's in the general ledger system, and that's what produces accurate financial reporting, which leads to awards like this. So thank you all very much. Lastly, if you have any public comments to make, please sign the register in the back corner of the room. We'll take those up after our regular session, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Our first item on agenda tonight is a regular meeting, June 17th, for minutes 2025. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott. Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-154.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Zane Martin to the position of Staff Accountant Two in the Finance Department.
移到 Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to hand this one off to Katie Schaller Ward, our Assistant City Manager and CFO, to announce her promotion over in Finance. Katie?
If you recall, with the fiscal year 2026 budget, we created a new position, Staff Accountant Two, for our revenue division, and it's my privilege to recommend the promotion of Zane Martin. He's currently Staff Accountant One. He's been with the City of Bowling Green since fiscal year 2020, or calendar year 2020, May of 2020. And he has been a tremendous asset for our department. He actually also recently achieved his Certified Public Finance Officer designation. It's typically a two-year process. He got it done in three months and passed seven different tests, and so we're very, very proud to have him on our team, and I recommend his promotion. And he is here tonight.
Zane, do you have anyone with you?
My wife.
Hi, wife. Well, stand up a second. We're going to try to make this official. All right, Commissioners, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Zane. Municipal Order Number 2025-155.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of James Morrow to the position of Quartermaster in the Fire Department.
移到
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask TR Britt, our HR Manager that handles our Fire Department, to come up and make this announcement. TR?
Evening, everyone. We would like to make the recommendation for appointment for Mr. Jim Morrow. He is, let me start off with this. It's for the Quartermaster, new position for FY '26. He's going to be doing a little bit of everything. He kind of already was doing this role, and he's been in multiple roles duly, but he will be responsible for procurement, distribution, inventory management, everything for PPE. He's going to abide by the NFPA standards, and it's going to be a critical role for the Fire Department. And like I said, you know, he's already been involved in it. He has been with us since 96. He started as a Company Commander in the Fire Department, and in 2021, he transitioned into interim Fire Chief. So he's played a lot of roles for the Fire Department. So we're kind of honored to be able to keep him in any capacity, so I'd like to recommend for this appointment.
Thank you, TR. Is he here tonight?
He is not here tonight.
All right. All right.
It's probably working.
He's out there quartermastering. All right. Commissioners, you ready? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations to James Morrow. Municipal Order, yeah. Municipal Order Number 2025-156.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Jackson Ezell to the position of Creative Media Specialist in the City Manager Department.
移到
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I'll ask Lori Gray, HR Manager, who is our representative for City Manager's Office, and Lori, come up and make this recommendation.
Good evening. Thanks. I am here to recommend the appointment of Jackson, or what we fondly call him, Jack Ezell, appointed to the Creatives Media Specialist position in the City Manager Department. If you want to stand. This is a new position that was approved in the fiscal year '26 budget, so I want to give just a brief summary of what this position looks like. It is responsible for recording and editing high-quality video content for internal and external communications, shooting and editing professional-grade photography for use across all city platforms, recording and editing podcasts for distribution on public channels, assisting in opening and closing City Hall and greeting members of the public as needed, collaborating with our graphic designer on a variety of visual and communication projects, assisting with the broadcast and online uploading of public meetings to the social, I'm sorry, to the local access cable channel and digital platforms, producing weekly video content for our Parks and Recreation Department. And this position is dedicated approximately 12.5% of weekly work hours to the parks projects. Also serving in an on-call capacity outside regular hours during special events or emergencies as needed. The City Manager Department selected an internal candidate for the role. The candidate in this position is, or in this situation, is Jackie Ezell, and he's already serving in this capacity as a part-time employee. He's being recommended for appointment. He holds a bachelor's degree in broadcasting and advertising from WKU, and he currently works here as a part-time office assistant. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Lori. Jack, where you sit down. I see some people behind you. Would you like to introduce those?
I would love to. These are my parents, Beth and Scottie Ezell. They came from Franklin, Tennessee. I've got some of my closest friends, Caleb Spain and Logan Graham right here.
Right. And Jack, he's no stranger to us. He has been an intern also for the city, and we've watched you progress and grow and accomplish a lot, so well done. Commissioners?
Likewise.
Mayor, I'd like just to say that I feel like our broadcast division headed by Debbie Highland, Deborah Highland West is way up there. We produce TV-quality stuff, and it's very impressive to watch them put it all together. It's a lot of hours sitting behind editing stuff, cutting, pasting, making people look good, but it's, I'm really very pleased with the quality of broadcasting and videos that we produce. I'm a little partial, but I feel like we could compete with anybody, so I'm really, really thankful for that.
Raina, Debbie, Jennifer, would you all stand up?
Yeah. Laura.
Laura.
So, there's the depth, but the professionalism of our broadcasting. Jack's joining a good team here, so.
I agree, Jeff. In social media, they do a fantastic job keeping the community informed. That's great. Welcome full-time, Jack.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-157.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Richard Cardwell to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer One in the Parks and Recreation Department.
移到 Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We have a vacant position in parks I'd like, we'd like to fill, and I'd like to ask TR to come back up and make this recommendation. TR?
So we would like to recommend Mr. Richard Cardwell for appointment for Facility Maintainer One for the Cemetery Division. We've had a lot of moving parts going on there, but we, this position was opened due to a resignation. He will be helping with maintaining grounds, operation, various equipment, some light construction, and also helping with some of the funeral services. Richard, if you please stand. Last year, we met Richard. He started working in our Fitness Department part-time. Everyone already knows Richard by name at Parks and Recreation, which is a good thing, but he brings over 30 years of experience with construction and unitment, so he's going to provide, be a great asset to the cemetery. So let me know if you have questions.
Thank you, TR. Richard, hello? Good to see you tonight. Are you, have anyone with you? And you have anyone from your department, or? Yes, all right. Richard. I was just checking. Thank you all for being here to support Richard tonight, and congratulations to you. And thank you for your work and continued growth within our city. All right. Commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Richard. Municipal Order Number 2025-158.
Municipal Order authorizing the renewal of bid number 202346 for fire department uniforms from Galls LLC and Nats Outdoor Sports based on unit prices.
移到
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We issued a bid request out for some fire uniforms, fire equipment, and there were two winners back in 2024, FY '24, Galls and Nats. We had an option to renew with them. This will be the second and last renewal. We'll bid this out next year again, but both Nats and Galls have agreed to the renewal with some minor price adjustments that we're okay with, and that's in your packets, but request to renew with Galls and Nats for basic firefighter uniforms, tactical apparel, Class A uniforms, outerwear and hats, footwear, exercise wear, exercise footwear, badges, insignia, and gear bags and miscellaneous items. If you have any questions, Chief Brooks is here, can answer any of your questions on this one. Just our final renewal with these two companies.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Thank you for being here tonight, Chief. Questions from Commissioners? None. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-159.
Municipal Order approving the purchase of turnout gear for the Fire Department with 911 Fleet and Fire Equipment in a total amount not to exceed $63,000 through cooperative purchase under Kentucky State Pricing Contract.
移到 Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
BGFD is in need to replace 15 sets of turnout gear. They're about to expire, will not meet the NFPA standards. We went out and found this item on the state pricing contract purchasing agreement and would like to go with that, and it's, the company is 911 Fleet and Fire Equipment. We've used them before, and they do good things, and award would be for $63,000, which would get us 15 sets of turnout gear for the Fire Department. Again, Chief Brooks is here, can answer any questions on this one.
Thank you. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-160.
Municipal Order authorizing accepting bid number 202543 for floor resurfacing at the Sloan Convention Center through non-competitive negotiations with Stewart Ritchie Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $85,800.
移到 Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I believe this item was probably discussed at your last convention center meeting, so you all are well aware of this need at the convention center. We need to replace some flooring in the back hall area. This one is, was, we only got one bid on it, so we were able to go into negotiations and get a little bit better price on this. Came in over budget, but we are recommending, looks like Stewart Ritchie Construction, in the amount of $85,800. They're going to come in, remove all the existing floor covering, clean up the debris, apply three coats for the new flooring, proper thickness, install knee rubber base around the whole area. I think that's probably the baseboard kind of thing, but we are requesting approval to move forward with this. Dave Hayner is here, our Facilities Manager, and heads up, oversees the convention center as well, can answer any of your questions on this one.
None. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-161.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of a contract for Clear Lane Enhanced De-Isers with Cargill, Inc., in the amount of $149.98 per ton.
移到 Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This past winter season, I believe we used quite a bit of salt in de-icer, and so we are in need to replenish that supply at Ops. We went, got a bid for this, I think in '24. This expired as of this month, yesterday probably, and, but we did have an option to renew, and so we went to Cargill, and they are offering a price of $149 per ton, and we were at $139.52 per ton, but it's inflation, and we are still needing this. Cargill is our best source, and recommending to go ahead and activate this renewal that we had for an additional three years. This would be the first of those three years that we have available for these renewal on this, and so asking your permission to proceed. Cost would be $149,980, and Andy Sues, our Public Works Director, is in the back of the room, can answer any questions on this one.
Thank you.
Hard to believe we're talking about snow removal, as hot as it's been.
As we've said before, you want to buy it in the summertime and not in the wintertime, so lock this price in.
Andy, thanks for being here. Dave, thanks for being here also. Questions at this time? No, none. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2025-162.
Municipal Order authorizing accepting bid number 202545 for mobile data computers from Law &amp; Order Technology LLC in an amount not to exceed $706,959.4.
移到 Second.
Moved by Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
You all probably heard Windows 10 is going away here in the next couple months. As we transition to Windows 11, it affects a lot of hardware. Part of that is in the police and fire departments, they have what they call mobile data computers in their cruisers and their fire trucks, and we call them MDCs, but we are in need of purchasing roughly 150 of these for patrol cars, even some motorcycles and some fire trucks. So Danita went out and went out for bid, and we got three bids in for this equipment. She specced it pretty tight. These are going to be semi-rugged. We used to have fully rugged, and they were very costly, but we found that we can get by with semi-rugged. You can still drop them. They can still survive that, spills, vibrations, but we felt like we could save a little money going from the high end to the kind of the middle grade of the semi-rugged. So I'd like to thank Danita for researching that, working with police and fire. These things will do a lot of different things. This one, this new one, will even have, will have a built-in barcode reader on it, where the officers can scan a driver's license and not have to, you know, spend a lot of time getting that information entered. And so anyway, we found that the City of Savannah, Georgia uses this product, and so does the City of Greensboro, North Carolina, and the low bid came in from Law &amp; Order Technology LLC out of Boynton Beach, Florida, in the amount of $706,959. So we are recommending the award go to that company. Danita Weeks, our IT Director is here, can answer any of your questions on this one, but I know this is a lot of money, but these are heavily used on a daily basis, and we need to be, you know, compatible with Windows 11 that's coming soon. There is a three-year warranty on these, so we do get free replacements when we do lose one or break one.
Thank you. Questions?
I have one quick question. Since we're just changing equipment, and I know for patrol officers, I mean, their car is their office, so just want to make sure, you know, you all feel like this is going to be able to be a good change for them, and they'll still be able to use it, and it won't be a downgrade for the officers?
Absolutely. So this is actually an upgrade for the officers. We actually gave them test devices and let them take them out. They prefer the semi-rugged because it's actually a lot lighter. So, you know, we threw a few off the top of the car. We made sure that it's, it does what it should, and it's going to be a lot lighter, they're faster, newer technology. Our officers complain right now of speed just because the devices are getting older. Technology is older. Buy new equipment, brand-new mounts, and all the vehicles, they're going to love it.
Great. Thank you so much for doing all that, making sure that this really is a great experience for our officers, and yeah, just excited about this for them. It sounds great.
Able resource for them, and it keeps them in their district, protecting the citizens that they're supposed to be protecting, right? So it keeps them out of setting, going back to the station to have to do paperwork. They could do it right there in the car, and it just saves a lot of time for them, so.
So can I ask one more question to Danita? Are they all the same for cruisers, motorcycles, and fire trucks? Are there variations of them?
Yeah, so we have two different, so for police, patrol, and what will also be on the motorcycles is the same device. It's just different mounts for the motorcycles. Obviously, they need a different mount than the patrol vehicles. The fire trucks actually have a different model. It's both Panasonic Toughbooks, but it's a little bit more flexible for our Fire Department. They are obviously on a truck, you've got multiple firefighters on the truck, so it's usually the guys in the back that are doing more of that work versus the driver themselves. And so they actually like a kind of a smaller tablet versus an actual keyboard and open laptop more for the patrol vehicles. So that is once again choice of police and fire. We let them kind of test out and see what they like, and so police and fire, different equipment, but it meets the needs for those departments.
Probably also helps out, having that scanner or the barcode, it probably also helps out the interaction with the everyday person that they come into contact with.
Absolutely. It's a little bit faster for them and less equipment that they mainly have to have in their car. So right now, they have to have a separate scanner that can also fail and break and not work, right? And so now this is built into the device, so it's one less piece of equipment and a very cramped patrol vehicle. I don't know how many of you guys have kind of rode around with one of our police officers and seen officers and seen how much equipment is in there, but this is built in, so it makes it much more convenient for both the officer and citizens that they come in contact with.
Thank you, Donita. Great research, and it looks like it's going to be a great enhancement. Okay? No further questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-three.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of a multi-screen training simulator for the police department through a sole source from TI Training LE LLC, in an amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mazel.
So we, we've had, we, Bowling Green Police Department has, has had a simulator for several years now, TI Training. We are looking at the next generation of that, TI Training LE LLC, to move into our new training center, and some of you all have gone through that center, that we have a designated room up there that's a lot more roomy than what we have now. And so we went out and found, you know, this new product of TI Training, and actually TI Training LLC is endorsed by KLC, because KLC gives us a discount on our insurance for using this product. It's got roughly up to ten scenarios you're training an officer on, different situations they will encounter, but this is a sole source. There is not one out there that has the scenarios that KLC, the KLC scorecard, their insurance services recommend, and so we went out, have tested this, and we are actually getting a fifteen thousand dollar trade-in on our old system. And so I'd like to thank Major Jeff Glitz and Lieutenant Colonel Bowles, who are here tonight, probably worked hard on this project along with IT, and we are recommending that we go with this, the new, latest and greatest from TI Training LE, in the amount of one sixty-three nine fifty, sole source. Lieutenant Colonel Bowles and Major Glitz can answer any of your questions, and Chief Delaney is here as well.
Major Glitz, could you just give us an insight what this training looks like to the officer? Can you come up?
Simulator systems have the ability to provide various types of training in a controlled environment, so you have the, the mitigation of risk when you're involved in training. So anywhere from de-escalation to firearms training to various other use of force of training, it allows us to conduct that, and there's probably thousands of scenarios. KLAC provides us, or KLC provides us ten every year, but there is a multitude of training operations that a simulator system will provide us.
So we're going from the system we had to this new system. What, what's, I mean, is it going to be more realistic? What's the field for an officer?
What you will see is, what you saw today, nine hundred square feet of a, of a training room, we will be able to utilize that with a three hundred system or a one eighty system. We've actually put in for a three hundred system, is we can either surround ourselves in a scenario, right now we're just up, up on the wall looking at a big, big screen, so it's just one hundred, just, just right in front of us. We can now surround ourselves, or I can put a screen off to the side for situational awareness and other training thing, training aspects of it. So we will maximize that space that you all have provided for us.
Please.
Follow-up question? Can you talk about how this increases safety, both for the officer and for our community as well, be able to do this type of training?
Again, it, it provides us to do training, almost, it requires two people. You know, a lot of training events are a little manpower-indusive, but this will allow us to go through the scenarios that KLC provides, which are based on current events, they're also based on current legislation, current case law, so they have the opportunity. And what's really nice about it is you can branch, what they call branching, is I have the options to change how I'm, if I'm interacting with you, based on my actions is how your interactions are going to be, because there's going to be someone operating the screen. So it provides for officer safety, recognizing stances, recognizing changes in tone, changes in demeanor.
I'm sorry, Glitz, I'm glad we have something like this. So funny thing, and it's a plug, I hate to say this, but probably about like ten years ago, a good friend of mine, but she's a professor, but she's a lawyer in Northern Kentucky, had a craft, we had a, something that we was trying to come up with, which was VirtuOS, and it was a VR-type simulator. Ours was based off of, it was going to like the police officers and the first responders, it was back twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, but we understood even back then how that real interaction, especially when you're dealing with a real person, was going to basically be help, to help you out. So having this is going to be huge, I think, for the safety for the officer, but it's also going to be able to, I guess, bring the community even more together, because that situational awareness, being like, the de-escalation is huge. So I'm glad you guys have something like that, because I feel like that wave of the future is going to let our police department become even better than what you guys are already doing, and your guys are, are killing it, are doing a great job now.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you for answering our questions. It sounds like incredibly an enhancement for our current situation in training. Of course, what he mentioned is that our new training facility, our, you know, second and third order facility for emergency operations, our joint police and our joint firefighter training station is now open and in play. That's the new station now at Station Eight at Porter Pike, and that facility is state-of-the-art. It's made for a level, for tornado to be able to hit it and to continue on existing, and we're proud of our police department. We're proud that we're kind of leading the way for the state to be able to take training seriously and do it enhanced, and to do it in-house. That means we have better recruitment, that means we're able to train our new police officers here at home, and to train where we serve, I think most importantly. So thank you very much for this. All right. Let's make it official. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-four.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting airport grant agreements among the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board, the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration for an aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle and equipment, tools, and personal protective equipment.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mazel.
We've been waiting for this opportunity for some time to replace the old truck out at the airport. We had a nineteen eighty-two model or so with the aircraft rescue and firefighter-type truck that had, I think it was yellow, wasn't it? And we had to sideline that thing back in twenty nineteen. We have not had, you know, a truck with foam to service, you know, the airport. We have serviced it with other means, but this is an excellent grant opportunity that Susan Harmon, our airport manager, with us tonight, has brought to us. Only requires a small match, our portion is only one point two five percent. So for the truck, we're looking at a match of thirteen thousand two thirty-three, and then the other part of this is the equipment and tools and PPE that goes along with it. Eighty-six thousand or so of that would be the second grant on top of the million, one forty-five grand for the truck. Our match for that would only be a little over a thousand dollars, so we're only looking at our match of fourteen thousand three seventeen for our one point two five percent. So we are asking your permission to move forward with this, and hopefully we'll get this truck and equipment. And Ms. Susan Harmon is here, can answer any of your questions on this. Chief maybe can answer some questions too about the, the, the old truck or the history out there on this, but this would be an excellent, excellent grab if we could get it, to get this truck and equipment.
Mazel? Questions? Great grant. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-five.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting an airport grant agreement among the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board, the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration for taxiway C construction and rehabilitation design.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mazel.
This is another application for a grant from FAA. This is for the taxiway, Charlie, or C runway, I guess is what you call it, taxiway. You want to come up, Susan, and, and talk about this one? This is another great one, would give us three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. We match it with one point two five percent or four thousand dollars, so it's an excellent leverage on this one. Susan?
This is the design for a taxiway that services several of our corporate hangars, and we have some potential development of new corporate hangars as well. It's just old pavement that needs rehabbing. Also, usually, I know Jeff said ninety-five percent is the federal, usually it's ninety percent, and city usually has to give two and a half, so this is a good year to have both of these grants. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Susan. Answered your question, commissioners? Further questions? None? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-six.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholding its credit agreement with Valor Flex Packaging LLC.
Moved.
Second. By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mazel.
I'm going to ask Katie Schaller Ward, our Assistant City Manager, see if I would give you an overview of this job development incentive application. Katie?
This particular application came before the JDI P committee on June seventeenth, and it just recently announced, I believe, last Wednesday. And so this is Valor Flex Packaging LLC. They did apply for the KBI, the Kentucky Business Investment Program, which provides three percent, and we match with one percent of our occupational fee as a credit. They're going to create seventy-six new jobs within the first ten years, and up to eighty-two jobs within the next total fifteen years. We're only going to credit the ten years, that's what our program allows for. So seventy-six new jobs, they're going to invest, capital investment of nearly twenty-three point four million dollars, and again, this will be a ten-year program, so five hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars would be their share, and because we have a two percent occupational, we, obviously, it's a fifty-fifty split for that.
Where's it going to be located, Katie?
This is going to be in the trans park.
Are they building, or is it an existing building?
It's an existing building. It was a private developer that created a spec building that they're going to be purchasing.
Thank you, Katie. Other questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-seven.
Municipal order authorizing an amendment to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mazel.
Much like our budget, we like to keep our capital improvement program up to date, and so from time to time, we propose amendments on it. Tonight is a second amendment to our CIP FY twenty-four through FY twenty-seven, or actually FY twenty-five through FY twenty-eight, sorry. These are just some things you all have already approved and voted on throughout this fiscal year. As you'll recognize, a lot of these projects that were mentioned are mentioned here in the memo. The water rescue boat, equipment that we got for fire, Riverview Drive, pedestrian islands, we got the grant for and spent money on the simulator room equipment we just voted on, you all just voted on. There's a little bit of everything in here, fuel tanks that we bought, convention center furniture fixtures, oh, Parker Bennett Playground and Reservoir Hill, Reservoir Hill Park upgrade, scoreboard replacements, crosswinds, cart bath repairs, like I said, Hobson Grove irrigation, Lampkin Park improvements, and so we are requesting your approval on this. Would like to thank Megan Van Meter for putting these new revised schedules together that are in your packets. One is by fiscal year, the first one, the second one is by fund, funding source, and so we can try to, Katie or I can try to answer any questions you might have on these revisions, but this is just to keep this document up to, up to date where we can reference, and it comes in pretty handy during budget time, so.
Hey, commissioners, questions?
Quick comment. I love looking back at this list, when, you know, when we, we asked our whole community, all of us kind of pitch in together to invest in our city, and to see, you know, you can go around town and see how we are reinvesting back in our community. You don't have to ask, you know, where is the taxpayer dollars going to in Bowling Green? You can look around just everywhere and see all the amazing ways you're reinvesting. Got to see the new Swift Water Rescue Boat at the training center today, the pedestrian island's going to connect everyone to the new and improved riverfront park soon, and like you said, the playgrounds that we are upgrading. So it's just really exciting to just look back at this list and see all the ways that we are caring for and reinvesting in our community, so thank you all.
No further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-eight.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Bonnie Williams to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
Moved. Second.
Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Hill. This is a recommendation I have, and I see that we have Katie Miller here from our Housing Authority, because this is for the Housing Authority to sit on their board, and I'm recommending Bonnie Williams. Bonnie, a little bit about her, she works for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office since nineteen ninety-eight, and she still works there today. She does preparing of cases, court proceedings, producing legal documents, and ensures judicial adjudication. Bonnie serves on the grand jury coordinator, coordinator for Warren County, and she prepares, excuse me, criminal indictments, coordinates to the law enforcement, officers, and prosecuting attorneys on case files. And I have Bonnie Williams recommending her for the Housing Authority Board tonight. Okay? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-nine.
Municipal order approving the appointment of David Lee to the Historic Preservation Board.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by, I'm sorry, moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Lee, he is, he works for the Western Kentucky University. He did, he retired, but he worked there since nineteen seventy-five, was a professor of history. He was the dean of Potter College Arts and Letters, and provost and vice president for academic affairs, and then he, even his retirement, he still serves as a university historian, and he and his wife live in a nineteenth-century house on the edge of WKU campus. Couldn't think of more, a better recommendation for this historic board, for the Historic Preservation Board than David Lee. Okay? Questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash one seventy.
Municipal order approving a donation from Coon Family Charitable Foundation for the purchase of property for the future development of Fire Station Number Nine for the Bowling Green Fire Department.
Moved. Second.
By Commissioner Paragon, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mazel.
As you all probably know, we've been looking for some property for our Station Nine, which would be servicing the Russell Road corridor. We were so fortunate to come in contact and meet the Coon family, the Coon Family Charitable Foundation, who are offering us a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar contribution, donation toward the purchase of the land that we need for Station Nine, and I'd like to ask Chief Brooks to come up and say a few words on, and kind of tell you where we are on this, and thank, thank the Coons, so Coon family. Chief?
Evening. A few months ago, many months ago, we got a chance to meet the Coon family. This didn't start with future Fire Station Nine land. This didn't start with future Fire Station Nine land. This was about the baby boxes. They're big supporters in trying to make the community safer and to take their blessed funds and to pour back in the community. And their reach is far greater than a baby box or a fire station land. Their reach is through Western, as you can see and read about that. And it's up and down the interstates as well. But my my most respectful takeaway from them is is they want to do it in the shadows. And so this one's tough, because this puts them in the spotlight. And I'm sure everybody's got more questions than we have answers. But as of right now, to come forward and to write a check of this magnitude, we're grateful. And they know the need, because in that meeting over a baby box, we were able to tell them where we want to go and tell them where we need to be. And so we're looking at some properties, and hopefully we'll have those, that good news coming in soon. But we got work to do. But right now, it feels good to be back to the table with with a family such as this, supporting not just the fire department, but they support the community through the fire department. And so we all win, and we're grateful for tonight.
Yes, they do a lot of things in the background for our community, and we really appreciate that.
Tell them thank you, because it's it's huge, not just for the baby boxes, but also to help out with the community just in large. We know that Hillary and I work with, you know, sometimes in the past, with babies who are dropped off and sometimes with dependency neglect and abuse and things happen. So we know how huge it is sometimes just to have those boxes there. And when they just providing it, they're providing a safe space for that baby for the interim period, so they can get to like a safe place where they can go to. And then they step up even farther and want to help out like the community to build like a fire department thing, help us out. That's huge. Tell them thank you. And thank you, because you've been talking to them and working with them. So I appreciate you, chief, like just working with them as well.
Yeah, it's a team effort. This is not the first donation that we received from them. They they paid in full the the full retrofitting of Station Six, Greenwood Station out on Cherry Farms out by Greenwood High School, for that third baby box to add to our city. And we have plans in this future Fire Station Nine where we're wanting to build, where we hope to build, to put the fourth and final baby box, to take care of the needs of anyone and everyone, as they may come across state lines as we've seen.
Please give the Coon family my thanks as well. I'm just so touched that they would invest in our community in this way. I mean, public-private partnerships like this are what make our community so special. And I also just want to say, you know, this this says a lot about your fire department and your leadership, that the Coon Family Foundation would work with you on baby boxes and see that further investments would be a good investment for our community, that their funds are safe in your hands, and that they know it's gonna make an incredible impact. And so I think what that says about your fire department and your leadership is a lot. And so I'm just so grateful for your leadership. And I'm just so grateful for the Coon family for allowing us to continue to expand our fire protection. As our city's growing so fast, we know that, you know, we want to make sure that we can get there quickly, whenever that worst moment happens for a family. And their investment is gonna help us be able to, you know, grow our fire department, to be able to reach those places that are growing so swiftly and be able to help us save lives. And I am just so moved and touched by this partnership and their donation and just really grateful that you all have developed this partnership.
And thank you. The the Coon Family Charitable Foundation, they understand the mission. How would he serve, save, and protect them? And how do we make it better? And this check allows us to get going to make it better real quicker than than we were. So. Thank you.
Chief, before you leave, it's quite a generous donation from a single family.
Their motivation, just to note, we've had two babies delivered to our safe boxes, and we've saved two babies that have, you know, come to those baby boxes that are in your firehouses. And they're quite stories that are growing, they're quite incredible stories that are growing here in Bowling Green as we speak. So, thank you, chief.
Sir, have a good night.
I say, commissioners, we accept this fine donation. How about y'all? Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance number BG 2025 dash nine, second reading binding.
Ordinance annexing right-of-way by consent. Ordinance annexing a total of approximately 7.09 acres of right-of-way located on Freeport Road with property presently owned by Warren County, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
Moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey. This was a five and oh votes. Are any new discussion? Ben, thank you for being here tonight. On these next few, roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025 dash 10, second reading binding.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing a total of approximately .5117 acre of property located at zero Old Baron River Road with property presently owned by Covington Farms Development LLC, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner Brown, second by five and oh. Any new discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025 dash 11, second reading binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2025.
Moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second, second reading, five and oh. Any new discussion? Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2025 dash 12, second reading binding.
Ordinance renaming street. Ordinance approving the renaming of White Court to Abraham Avenue.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. This was five and oh, and I believe we all had to say, yes, Abraham. Katie Miller, thank you for being here again tonight. And this is gonna be incredible to have this event, to name this after our good friend Abraham Williams. Commissioners, any comments?
Let us know when we can come over there and cut the ribbon.
After will. Break your wallets, too, if any.
You're not lying.
He certainly rubbed off on you.
All right, let's bring it home. Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Yes, Abraham. Ordinance number BG 2025 dash 13, second reading binding.
Ordinance submitting code of ordinances. Ordinance submitting Chapter 17 Personnel Policies to Remove Subchapter 17 dash 4 Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances.
Moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This was five and oh, our last commission meeting. Any new discussion? Roll call, please.
Easely Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay, as we're checking to see if anyone has, would like to make a comment.
Want to make a comment?
Our next scheduled meeting's July 15th at 2025. No further discussion? Or adjourned? Thank you.